Twenty nineteen for my colleagues, my colleagues please silence all electronic devices at this time. Under Admin Matters, I was gonna say Mr. Edwards is gonna be late, but he's already here.
I will be departing and returning.
Departing early and returning before the formal meeting is over.
Take your glasses.
And also Mrs. Holt's absent this evening. The first thing I'd like to point out under Agenda Matters is that we will have two items for close this evening, closed session this evening. We'll try to do one of the items before the formal meeting, but if we don't have time, we'll do it, we'll do both of them after. But we definitely have to do the second one after the formal meeting. We have several speakers for the public hearing on the Rose Hall appointment as well as some speakers signed up to speak. Well, I don't really think we have any agenda item speakers at this point, but we do have several speakers on the public forum. So we'll try to hear all of them, and we will hear all of them. But if there are more speakers still waiting at seven thirty, our, the way we've done in the past is at seven thirty, we proceed with our meeting and then we come back to them before our meeting is over. Probably right after information, we come back to those speakers that are left, so they're still on camera, okay?
I suggest that we be flexible on that. If there's like two more speakers to go, I think it makes sense. I mean, if you've got like twelve more speakers to go,
Right.
Then I would say, yeah, we need a second. But if there's only just a, you know, I would kind of suggest you, you know, we make that a judgment call by you.
If there's only a couple, I hate to make them wait before meeting.
Right, right, right.
But if there's like five or six, we probably should just go on and then put them after. We'll see how we go. But I'll just kind of use my judgment on it and see how many are left. Also, I passed out a paper about the Energy Performance Contracting Project. And as you can see, the administration has asked that we move that from Consent Twelve C to Information Fourteen A during the adoption of the agenda. And also, one of our colleagues has asked to move Consent Item Twelve B Two, which has to do with the field lighting for athletic field lighting for five high schools. So if there's no objection, we're gonna move that to Action so that we have a chance to discuss it. So is there objection to that? Okay. So I think those are the three things that we're... If we have speakers at the end, we will have to, and we'll know once we start the meeting. If we have extra speakers, we'll adjust the agenda for that as well. And that will end up being, I believe, number fifteen on the agenda if we have to wait for them to do that after information. It would be number fifteen, but we'll wait and see how that goes. Does anyone else have something to share with us under Admin Matters? Yes?
Hi, I'll just share quickly that Council of PTAs had its annual dinner last week. And it's always heartwarming to see the administrators who come out in support of their presidents and officers. And the other event that other colleagues were at was the Green Run Collegiate Gala. And that was the first, now that it has its 501(c)(3) status, anybody else can feel free to wave in. But this, this was its first official fundraiser, at least on this scale. A lovely Saturday night event with a good cross-section of stakeholders. So congratulations to all who were behind those efforts.
Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Spence, we're ready for our first workshop on social emotional learning.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So as you all know, social emotional learning is one of the focuses of our strategic plan. So we're gonna update you on this evening, on that this evening. And then we'll transition straight into a conversation and an update on PBIS. And leading both of those conversations will be...
Point of process, we skipped item one? A one?
A one is administrative matters.
She's, I think she's talking about next steps.
Next steps for the appointment of interim Rose School Board members to fill out vacancy in District Three Rose Hall.
That is gonna be covered. I didn't see that on the agenda as A one.
It's, it's there.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
For some reason, I don't have that on my, on my... So I think most of that is gonna be covered when we go into close. Is that correct?
I think you were gonna talk about a little bit your tentative schedule and what you thought, what you thought you were looking at. And then some of the information we covered in close.
As far as whether it's the twenty first or the twenty eighth, do you wanna talk about that?
I think you were talking about when you thought that you were going to do interviews and how long you thought it was gonna take for you...
Okay, all right, we can do that now. Sorry about that. Somehow that got left off of my agenda here, but... So one of the things that we talked about was possibly having a special meeting on the twenty first. And we were gonna wait and see how many people we had. Well, right now, we have five, five people to interview, if that's what we decide tonight. And so, but we thought we would try to be fair to each one and give each one at least thirty minutes for the interview process. So if we do it on the twenty eighth, which is our regular meeting, we're probably gonna have to start around twelve, twelve-thirty to get that finished by four o'clock. If we do it on the twenty first, next Tuesday, the twenty first, we could start at our normal time at four o'clock. Then go into a, after we've, directly after we've had the interviews, go right into a special meeting where we could vote and decide on who the person is gonna be. So I thought we'd leave that up to you all, and you can decide whether you want to meet on the twenty first at four o'clock to begin interviews, or whether you'd like to meet at, starting at around noon, between noon or twelve-thirty on the twenty eighth.
And what else to point out to you, Mrs. Anderson, that the Achievable Dreams meeting has also set that after in the twenty first. So if we do that, we would have to work around the Achievable Dreams meeting.
We did, we did, we talked about that, yeah. Achievable Dream meets, I believe, at one, one o'clock.
Yeah, it'd be over by...
Right, so we would be over by that time.
By three for sure.
Right. Yes.
So my question is, because I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. We may be interviewing five, we may be interviewing two, it may be, or is it, we're gonna interview five period?
I think that's why I thought we were gonna talk about this process at, in the closed session, 'cause I thought at that point in time, we could decide this evening whether we're gonna interview all five or whether we wanted to interview, just we wanted to narrow it down. But I think we, you know, there's only five, but, but at the same time, that is a lot. So we wanna be fair to everybody, so what do you all think?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Perhaps we could go into close, have our discussions that are pertinent in closed session, and then come out of closed, back into open, and then maybe we'll have more information to decide what we wanna do?
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking all along.
Okay.
Well, and that's what I was going to, whether or not we can handle it.
Actually, the point was to let the public know what you were going to, you were going to close session to talk about the candidates, which is something you do in closed session, and some of the questions you would ask of them. But to put the public to know what you were thinking generally about the interviews, because the resolution as you passed left a potential for interviews on the twenty first or the twenty eighth, which is something we discussed last time. So we just want the public to know what it was you were going to discuss. And that wouldn't be interviews today, but just be discussing what your, what your intent was, who you would interview, when you thought you might be interviewing.
I mean, we may end up deciding at the end of this evening that we wanna interview all five. I mean, you know, just to be fair about it. Or we might be able to decide this evening that, no, we're gonna eliminate one or two. I don't know, but that, I think that's something that we can decide after we've had a chance to hear at least the public comments on people.
So it's hard to know how much time we need and whether we're gonna have a different night until we're best decided.
Right, right, if we, if we have five, my suggestion, if we have five, I'd prefer to go ahead and do it on the twenty first, vote on the twenty first in a special meeting. And then, but if we're down to two, we might be able to meet at, say, at three o'clock on the twenty eighth and, and then go from there.
I agree, that's my inclination as well.
All right, so we're just gonna leave this open ended for now. And by the evening, before, before you leave tonight, you will make a decision whether we're gonna have a special meeting on the twenty first or whether we're gonna proceed on the twenty eighth. Is that okay?
It is.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions? I think we're all ready.
Okay, so with my intro already on the record, I'll ask Dr. Rogers to come out and then start our workshop on social emotional learning.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Spence. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, staff from the Department of Teaching and Learning will provide you with an update on Compass Twenty Twenty Go Three Social Emotional Development and Social Emotional Learning. If you remember, in November of two thousand seventeen, the school board received information on the division's strategies for supporting Go Three, and specifically in the areas of the Student Response Team Processes, Mediation, and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, otherwise known as PBIS. And we'll talk about that a little later in the next session, the next presentation. As part of that mid-year update to the Strategic Action Agenda for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the school board had an update on culturally responsive practices, restorative practices, and use of mediation relative to supporting social emotional development. So this afternoon's presentation will provide you with an update on additional strategies that support the social emotional development of our students as stated in Goal Three of the Strategic Plan. Today's presentation goals are first, to share with you how we are defining social emotional learning in our school division, to review the core competencies of social emotional learning, and lastly, to outline strategies for the implementation of social emotional learning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We will review the progress of the division that we've made with the development of the implementation of social emotional learning. And before we delve into the presentation goals, it's important to provide an historical perspective on how social emotional learning, or referred to it as SEL interchangeably, has unfolded in our schools. During the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, an Early Warning System Committee was formed to identify an instrument that would provide an alert to school staff for students who may need additional emotional and mental health support. It was the Early Warning System Committee that helped with the identification of the research model for defining social emotional learning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. This committee included staff from the Office of Student Support Services, School Leadership, Research and Evaluation, the Department of Technology, and the Department of Teaching and Learning. The EWS Committee continued its work until the end of two thousand seventeen, twenty eighteen, after researching many early warning systems and social emotional learning frameworks that align with the, with the strategic goal number three for social emotional development. So you might ask, what is social emotional learning? The Early Warning System Committee agreed that the framework from the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, otherwise known as CASL, and you'll hear me refer to that several times throughout the presentation, was a framework that would define social emotional learning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. CASL defines social emotional learning as, "The process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills that are necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions." The CASL model shown on this slide aligns well with our teaching and learning framework and supports Goal Three of the Strategic Plan Compass Twenty Twenty. The CASL framework for social emotional learning, SEL, enhances students' capacity to integrate skills, attitudes, and behaviors in order to be able to deal effectively and ethically with daily tasks and challenges. Like many similar frameworks, CASL's integrated framework promotes interpersonal, interpersonal, and cognitive competence. There are five core competencies that can be taught in many ways, across many settings, that we will take a closer look at during this presentation. And before we do that, we'll discuss why the need for social emotional learning. So today's schools are increasingly multicultural and multilingual, with students from diverse social and economic backgrounds. Educators and community agencies serve students with different motivation for engaging in their learning, behaving positively, and performing academically. Social emotional learning provides a foundation for safe and positive learning and enhances students' ability to succeed in school, careers, and throughout their lives. There's been a shift in how educators and child development experts think about the skills that students need to be successful in their schools and in life. Some researchers now suggest that a child's success or failure isn't only determined by cognitive skills as once thought. SEL skills are those most related to character, including grit, optimism, and self-awareness, are other important contributors to student success. The five core competencies on this slide explain why social emotional learning is necessary. There's self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And I'd like to take a look at each of those briefly. Self-awareness, this is the ability to accurately recognize one's own emotions, thoughts, and values, and how they influence behavior. The ability to accurately assess one's strengths and limitations with a well-grounded sense of confidence, optimism, and a growth mindset. The next one is self-management. This provides students with the ability to successfully regulate their own emotions, their thoughts, their behaviors in different situations, and to effectively manage stress, controlling impulses, and motivating oneself, intrinsic motivation. This is also the ability to set and work toward personal and academic goals. The next one is social awareness. This gives students the ability to take the perspective of and emphasize with others, including those from diverse backgrounds and cultures. The ability to understand and social, understand social and ethical norms for behavior and to recognize family, school, and community resources as well as supports. The next one is relationship skills. In this focus areas of relationship skills, students are able to establish and maintain healthy and rewarding relationships with diverse individuals as well as groups. The ability to communicate clearly, to listen well, cooperate with others, resist inappropriate social pressure, and negotiate conflict constructively, as well as to seek and offer help whenever it's needed. And then lastly, responsible decision-making. Responsible decision-making provides students with the ability to make constructive choices about personal behavior and social interactions that are based on ethical standards, safety concerns, as well as social norms. The realistic evaluation of consequences of various actions and a consideration of the well-being of oneself as well as others. So then the question becomes, how are we in Virginia Beach City Public Schools supporting SEL? So as our level of awareness increases about the multiple benefits of SEL for students and staff alike, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is adopting systemic strategies that embed SEL into every aspect of school life and involves all of our departments. This year, with the implementation of the Division-wide Social Emotional Learning Committee, we have generated division-wide collaboration across departments so that SEL in Virginia Beach is implemented systematically throughout all of our departments in office collaboration in order to ensure division-wide positive impact for our students. We're using SEL to help school leaders create positive climates that keep students safe and make learning possible. We're also using SEL to inform classroom instruction and strengthen student and teacher relationships. And SEL is driving school collaboration with our families and with community partners. For example, Anchor for Life is at the elementary level and middle school level, and it's designed to help students from military families transition into our schools. The BASE Program, Choices Program, morning meetings in elementary schools, secondary advisory choice session, restorative practices, mediation, and lastly, PBIS implementation. And again, we'll take a closer look at PBIS implementation during the next presentation. These are all examples of social emotional learning strategies that we use in Virginia Beach and that have been in place for a few years now. So I'll tell a little bit about the work of the Division-wide SEL Committee. Using the Strategic Action Agenda item that states we will utilize SEL practices such as PBIS, the Division's Social Emotional Learning Committee seeks to answer the driving question, "How does SEL live in Virginia Beach City Public Schools?" The committee is working collaboratively, collaboratively across multiple departments to identify systemic ways in which we raise consciousness about SEL, as well as focus on the fact that two-thirds of all of our students have had some type of what's referred to as an ACE or an adverse childhood experience. These things can have an effect on a child's overall well-being inside as well as outside of the school. The committee is also working to develop a common language across the school division that all of our staff can use. We are incorporating the five competencies of SEL that I just shared with you within the curriculum and developing resources that our staff can access to further, to further, to further support SEL in our schools. The committee is also looking at professional learning opportunities, as well as designing SEL fellows who will ignite the SEL framework in our school division. Moving forward, we will continue to develop systemic division-wide strategies as well as interventions that will continue to support students and promote academic success for all of our students while meeting their social and emotional development. The five competencies will be embedded into our curriculum that is well underway, especially in our elementary department. SEL will be a major focus for our Summer Leadership Conference. And for those of you all who did not know, we did adjust the name of our annual Summer Administrators Conference to that of Summer Leadership Conference. The conference will be held in July, and we have invited teacher leaders to join administrators in professional learning. And at that conference, we will focus on the knowledge and skills that are necessary to support the priorities that are outlined in the two thousand nineteen, twenty Strategic Action Agenda, Action Agenda. We'll also develop a deeper understanding of social emotional learning and what it looks like in the daily life of schools, and what resources we have in Virginia Beach to support that work. I'd like to thank Dr. Robinson for beginning this work last year and prior, as well as all of the staff from the Department of Teaching and Learning and School Leadership for leading this work. At this time, I do have members of my staff that stand ready to answer any questions that you may have on this high-level overview of SEL in Virginia Beach.
Do we have any questions? Miss Wayne?
Yes, thank you. For the ACE, adverse childhood experience, what does that encompass?
That could encompass anything. It could, it doesn't have to be abuse, it could be verbal abuse at the home, take this from a sibling, death, a family member in jail. It could be any number of things that could attribute to a student having some issues that they need to deal with that have a connection to their mental capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dalton?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Yes.
Good presentation. I'd like to go back to the steps that you mentioned, self-awareness, self-management, self-social, self-relationship. And, and I won't let Ash to go through all of them, just but on the self-awareness. Can you explain, can you give us a broad explanation or more explanation on that self-awareness portion of that? And what does that include, self-awareness?
Being self-aware is teaching students how to recognize their strengths and opportunities for improvement. And when we have staff, be it a teacher, school counselor, an adult in the building, they should be able to assist that student with helping them to become more aware of what they're good at. So for example, with our academic and career planning, part of that process is helping students understand what their passion is and helping them develop what it means to us for college. We have our elementary school students who participate in our capstone projects, or one school calls them their passion project, helping them understand what they like and helping them to build on those strengths that they have. And then also realizing that they may have some opportunities for improvement, and what opportunities do we offer in our school to help them build up those areas of improvement for them?
So management as well coming to play with all this, can you elaborate on that, the management part?
The self-management?
Yes.
That's a, self-management is teaching kids how to manage their emotions and not be as impulsive. So for not being reactive and to think about it. You may attribute it to counting to ten before you react on something that you may not necessarily wanna react to. Helping students manage stress, our students with, the high-line students that are identified as gifted, that's a common trait for those students, to help them be able to manage the stress that they have from managing schoolwork and homework and managing after-school activities. Helping kids to be self-motivated, that intrinsic motivation, to teach them, you know, hard work, what you get into something is what you get out of it. Helping students to be organized, teaching them how to manage their time, which sometimes contributes to their stress. Those kind of things.
So what is reaction after teaching a child how to manage his stress? Just give me an example, if we had a child that's stressing out in school other than counting to ten, what else do we, would we use to implement that stress warning?
Number of things, and I don't have a counseling background, but counselors, our counselors are highly trained in teaching kids how to manage their stress level. One thing is, is time management. A lot of times, more often than not, I'll use the secretary as an example, teaching students how to manage their time while keeping a calendar to organize when, when projects and assignments are due, when tests are coming up, and to teach them how to plan, to study. Those things that, that we can teach them in our high schools now, they'll carry forth should they decide to go to college or the military. How to be self-responsible and not be so reliant upon adults to assist them in managing their daily activities.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, I'll get you. I was wondering, like, a lot of times we get emails from parents talking about how they're, they feel that their child was bullied, and they feel that they bond to the teacher and they've discussed it. Is there, is there any, I just wanted to be clear about this before I would answer, oh, this is that type of thing. But is there any, like, is there any tracking that we do with that? I know that a lot of times people say, you know, well, it's just one incident. But, you know, if it's over and over, is there any type of tracking that we ask teachers to follow up on or counselors to follow up on, or?
So there is, it's actually, the law on this changed recently. We've done quite a bit of training on this with our administrative staff, because the law now requires with any bullying that there's a template that the division has that we now fill, fill out to, to review whether or not it's bullying or if it falls into a different category of behavior, and then to put that into our discipline system and track. I think any one of our docile folks can probably speak to this. Sharon, I know you guys have done a lot of work with your folks, Don, you guys wanna speak to some of the training we've done around that?
So we do have a form that we fill out that involves going out to the school, talking to the person making the complaint, then interviewing, excuse me, I've got a little thing going on here. Interviewing any of the potential witnesses, providing the information back to the person who made the complaint, issuing a finding, and then reporting that finding.
Kami provided the training to all of our principals at our lead meeting. So they've all been trained, and whenever they hear that a child is alleged being bullied, we have to complete that form, and they know they have to complete that form. And they notify both parents, the victim, the alleged victim, and also the other parent as well. So that's one way we're tracking it.
I'd also point out, there's actually a state definition, the Virginia Department of Education puts out what bullying is. A lot of times, a parent thinks something's bullying, and it's not what our definition of bullying is. You know, feeling bad because somebody didn't invite you to a birthday party is not bullying. And there has to be a persistent pattern with an intent to discriminate or harm the child that's the victim of the bullying. And a lot of times, parents think something's bullying, so it doesn't amount to bullying. And so we, they, that's just something you would handle in normal class of management.
So that training does include social media too, right? Because that's a huge part of it.
I think social media is handled in a different manner, but I think they cover that every year, but that's not necessarily part of bullying. I think within your social media training, they do cover those issues. I think it's a different, it's different than we do for the bullying training for the principals and ministers who have to handle a bullying reporting form.
So the training that Kami does is relative to how it's reported and how it's investigated. The training that we do every year on the Code of Conduct addresses what you're talking about, which is cyberbullying and the use of social media. And so, you know, the board has changed its policies over time to ref... And so, you know, the board has changed its policies over time to reflect its understanding of cyber issues. And so we certainly train on that as that finds itself in the Code of Conduct.
Okay, so in other words, it, it has to meet the state definition. And part of that, is part of that definition an ongoing trend that they're seeing or?
It's not a one-time event.
Yeah. If something is so severe on occasion, it was so, a very, very severe event might end up to bullying, but you're actually looking for an ongoing pattern, intent to do it. Occasionally something so severe that it needs, automatically needs a definition, but generally they're looking for a pattern and intent to go after a student. But that may, does mean it may not violate another form of, something else in the Code of Student Conduct, kind of be another violation for it. The state law requires bullying to be investigated and responded to in a short amount of time. But that doesn't mean we aren't dealing with it. We just may be handling it the way we would handle any other student discipline matter.
Ms. Rod?
Mine's quick. So if you can go back to the, the last slide, the final bullet. So I'm going to ask Dr. Spence to remind us and the public that you have already instituted pathways for teachers and administrators, what those are and that this sounds like it's an additional choice.
Correct. And so, we've updated the board in the past on the career matrix that we have developed for teachers and some of the various learning pathways that exist for teachers in the system. And then we've also talked about a number of pathways that have been developed for administrators, particularly our sitting principals and assistant principals. For example, we've got a special education pathway, we have a student discipline pathway, and so we have an instructional leadership pathway. And so these, this is in the Office of PGI, which, which works with Don and his team. Planning those pathways is an ongoing part of our professional development opportunities.
Thank you. So I feel that it does speak to, I mean, elevating it to that level speaks to even further to our commitment. So, thank you.
Well, one of the things I would just add, so, so this is a part of one of our, this is not a part of, this is a strategic plan goal, one of four. But in addition to that, there has been a significant shift at the state and federal level with a focus on SEL. And so that's something we didn't really talk about, but with the new ESA plan that Virginia submitted, they are requiring school divisions to address social emotional learning in the, in the division. And so that's a, that's a positive step forward and certainly have more flexibility under ESA to tackle some of these challenges than some of the other plans that happened under IDA, or not under IDA, under PSEA.
I just want to add, because you said that at the, the NSDA conferences and NSBA, they have many strands and sessions on SEL. So that, you know, when we go to them, we can go to those sessions because there's so much, it's become the, the big push.
Well, I think as Dr. Rogers mentioned earlier, the research that's sort of emerging around the impact of trauma and other, other issues. It's becoming important for us to understand how to tackle those, but also the research that suggests, as he said earlier, that these skills are really a set of core competencies that students need in order to be successful. I think in many ways they align, I hope you saw how they align to our graduate profiles.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I have spoken with many, many teachers who report that when PBIS is implemented in their schools, they, the discipline issues just increase exponentially, which means, of course, they have less time to do what they're there to do. They spend a lot of time dealing with disciplinary issues. How would you respond to that?
So if I could, we're going to have a separate presentation in just a second on PBIS. And we'll talk more about that and maybe answer that question during that time. And then if not, we'll answer it at the end. We do have our PBIS coaches here who work in the building, supporting our teachers in the implementation of PBIS. And so maybe we can talk about it at the end of that presentation if that's okay.
Ms. Dalton?
And Dr. Sis, you're probably hitting this in your PBIS, but when Ms. Lynette was talking about the form that the principals filled out and their definition is different what a parent definition is of bullying. So are we addressing, as we move forward in this process, addressing the parents' understanding as well as we move through this? Because it's important that, that they get the definition that we have and what they think is bullying.
So I want to also separate bullying and PBIS from, because they're not, PBIS is not the Code of Conduct.
Right.
And so we'll talk about what's in the Code of Conduct. Bullying issues have a very specific definition as, as Ms. Lynette referenced in the state code. And so that is reflected in our Code of Conduct. And so we communicate what bullying is in the Code of Conduct. And then when we fill out this form and we contact the parents and we have a conversation with them, if the administrators found that it's not really bullying, it's not great behavior and we're going to address it, but it isn't, it wouldn't fit into the, what we would consider to be bullying, then they'll communicate with the parents why that is.
Okay.
Why that doesn't meet with our definition of bullying.
And Ms. Dalton, one of the agreements we've talked with state, federal agencies is that we will come out next school year with some more information, both in the parent newsletters that go out and websites that they can, if they're night, night or evening, they want to go and look at the website. So that's something we're developing with media and communications and we'll be coming out with that next year. So if you want more information on the forms, other procedures, that'll be available to parents starting next school year. Thank you.
Ms. Wayne?
Yeah, that's a good point, Ms. Dalton, because I think just that word, people just encompass everything. Like my granddaughter will come home and say, I got bullied. You know, or so-and-so got bullied. I'm like, what happened? Little Johnny called Sally a name. And he said, then I have to explain to her, you know, it's just a one-time thing. So bad behavior, single bad behavior is not bullying. But I think that word is just such on everybody's mind that it's just used for kind of, any kind of misbehavior toward anybody. This is now, you know, being a bully and it's not.
Well, and I think it's important to note again, that that doesn't necessarily mean it is some other behavior.
Right. It's about, yeah, yeah, that needs to be addressed, but it's not, yes, exactly.
But sometimes it can be difficult to understand that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Bear with me while I transition.
All right, so next we'll have the update on positive behavior interventions and supports.
All right, I'm going to continue the conversation from SEL to behavior interventions. And not to go off script, good afternoon, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Mellet, School Board members and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, the Department of Teaching and Learning will provide you with an update on the division's implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports, otherwise known as PBIS. Again, in November 2017, the School Board received information on the division's strategies for supporting GO three specifically in the area of PBIS. Today's presentation's goals are to review the PBIS framework as it's used in Virginia Beach City Public Schools and to dispel misconceptions or some misconceptions about PBIS, as well as to share our next steps as we work toward sustainment. So what is PBIS? So our first task is to share what it is, as well as to share some of the reasons why PBIS is being implemented in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. In the past, school-wide discipline is focused mainly on being reactive. Reacting to specific student misbehavior by implementing punishment-based strategies, including reprimands, loss of privileges such as recess, office referrals, suspensions and expulsions. Research has shown that the implementation of punishment, especially when it's used inconsistently and in the absence of other positive strategies is ineffective. Introducing, modeling and reinforcing positive social behavior is an important step of a student's educational experience. Teaching behavior expectations and rewarding students for following them is a much more positive approach than waiting for misbehavior to occur before responding. The purpose of school-wide PBIS is to establish a climate in which appropriate behavior is the norm and not the exception. To be clear, PBIS is not focused only on promoting positive behaviors. PBIS develops preventive supports to enhance and align with the procedures outlined in our school discipline handbook and in the division's school to co, school to conduct. And just a quick story, I remember my first year teaching. The assistant principal who was in charge of working with first-year teachers, I was scared to death. I wasn't much older than the students that I was teaching. He told me, Kip, you have to teach everything. Don't assume anything. Well, he said, assume nothing, teach everything. And he said, I mean, teach them how to come in a classroom. Teach them how to walk down the hall. Teach them how to go and get a pass from the library. Teach them everything. And the rest of your year should be slow. It's about practices and procedures. And that's pretty much what PBIS is all about. So I'd like to remind you of the connection between PBIS and our division goals. In the last presentation, you heard about social emotional development and how it's being implemented systematically throughout the school division. Also, you may recall that PBIS is one of the division's strategies for social emotional development. Therefore, it does support GO three of our strategic plan. That speaks to students' benefit from an experience that fosters their social and emotional development. Also, you remember from the SEL presentation that BBPCS is emphasizing how PBIS provides a consistent, coherent structure for academics, behavior and social emotional learning for all of our students. The connection between the two, PBIS and SEL, is that PBIS establishes an approach that provides the structure for selecting, organizing, implementing and using evidence-based practices to support our students. Across our division, we have many initiatives that are supported by PBIS as shown in this slide. So what is the actual definition of PBIS? It's a universally defined methodology and it's data-driven decision-making. It's a framework for establishing the social culture and behavior supports that are needed for a school to be effective, an effective learning environment for all students and all staff. And again, to be clear, PBIS is not focused on only promoting positive behaviors. Data are used regularly by implementation teams to assist in making decisions to support students and staff. You're likely familiar with the triangle that you see in front of you that represents a tiered system of support to best respond to the varied needs, varied needs of our students. Tier one is what we do for all students in regards to academic SEL and behavior supports. Tier two is what we do for some students, thus those that don't respond to tier one interventions. And then tier three is what we do for a few students. In many cases, cases that's individual. And for those that require a higher level of support, again, that's individualized. Dr. Anne Shufflebarger, Principal of Salem Elementary School, does an excellent job of explaining what PBIS is and painting context for how it's used in her school. So I want to show you a video.
School experience. We're really looking at teaching those foundational pieces.
Mrs. Muse, I've got it. Mrs. Muse, I want to do it one more time.
PBIS is a system and a program. So what it involved training teachers in what the best practices are for teaching students appropriate behavior and positively rewarding that. And part of teaching the teachers is to change practice in the classroom and to unify it so that all of the teachers across Salem Elementary School are speaking the same language, have common values, are teaching the same way, so it doesn't confuse children. That focus on positivity has helped our school culture. I think it helps most of our students feel safer. We've watched our school data over three years, our discipline referral data, go down, down, down. So kids aren't getting in as much trouble because they understand what they need to do.
Explanation affirms what a number of research studies have documented over the past thirty years, three decades, about the effectiveness of PBIS and the framework at the school-wide level. According to the National Center for PBIS, when implemented with fidelity, that means it's being implemented as it's intended over time, which is usually three to five years. Research outcomes show a reduction in problematic behavior and increase in academic performance of students, an improved perception of safety for both students and staff alike, a reduction in bullying behaviors and improved organizational efficiency. So for example, moving in the hallways, reduction in staff turnover, increased perception of teacher advocacy, meaning that they can make a difference, and an improved social emotional competence. Thus, PBIS is comprised of research-based behavioral practices and interventions that have been shown to improve social, behavior and academic achievement. PBIS has also a proven record for improving school climate. Still, introducing PBIS to, PBIS to a school can produce a fair share of skepticism. Educators fear that PBIS will leave them with no effective means of behavior management. And some administrators may be reluctant to uphold the traditional system of discipline. There are plenty of PBIS myths that keep schools from implementing PBIS with fidelity. And let's take a look at a few of those myths. Myth number one, PBIS rewards students for what they are supposed to be doing. The fact is, many students aren't coming to school with the foundational skills that they need in order to be successful. Assume nothing, teach everything. Numerous reasons for this exist, including disadvantaged backgrounds, cultural differences, as well as developmental issues. And I had a saying with teachers, middle school kids do middle school stuff. We have to beat them halfway. For many, school is where they develop appropriate social and emotional skills. PBIS helps to establish behaviors that students will carry with them throughout the course of their lives. Myth number two, the positive in PBIS just means handing out treats and other goodies whenever kids behave. While on the surface it might seem to focus exclusively on rewards, the positive in PBIS actually refers to the intentional building of a productive and welcoming school climate. Some have suggested that this also diminishes intrinsic behavior, intrinsic motivation. However, the truth is acknowledging student behaviors that we want, that we want to see establishes a positive environment in which all students can flourish. And one real-world example that I can think of that we do very well, I think, is our Great Dreams Need Great Teachers campaign, where we acknowledge the behaviors that we'd like to see in all of our teachers. At its core, a successful school-wide implementation of PBIS curates positive teacher-student relationships. Myth number three, it's been, PBIS means that schools abandon discipline and teachers aren't allowed to punish misbehavior or even refer students to the office. Well, it's been established that punitive measures rarely produce positive outcomes. In fact, zero tolerance policies often produce the opposite effect from their initial intention. Some educators see PBIS as an ineffective program that's designed to be soft on misbehavior. However, a comprehensive three-tiered system of implementation can keep minor infractions from becoming bigger problems. Discipline definitely, definitely has its place in PBIS and it's applied very precisely in relation to infractions as outlined in our student code of conduct. The two are not mutually exclusive. Students are still held responsible for disciplinary infractions as outlined in the student code of conduct and in the disciplinary handbook. Mr. Charles from Point of View Elementary School speaks quite eloquently about the myth of schools abandoning discipline and that schools are being discouraged from writing discipline referrals. Let's listen to what he has to say.
From Point of View, I would, I would certainly disagree that it's, that it's just about rewards and that there's no punishment. When we talk about PBIS in our building, we're looking at three main tenets, being safe, being respectful and being responsible. And we're discussing those three areas with students at all times, not just when there is a disciplinary incident. It's part of daily morning meetings. It's part of conversation in the hallway. It's part of conversation in the cafeteria. It's part of conversation on the bus. Certainly, we do have students that are in violation of the Code of Student Conduct. We do have students that are suspended. I will tell you, I'm proud of the efforts that we have made over the last couple of years to keep our suspension rate below the division average for all students and below the division average for elementary students. But that said, we address the areas of safe, respectful, responsible when we are working with students who are in violation of the Code of Student Conduct. And if the disposition requires that they are suspended, they are suspended. But I'm also proud of some of the alternatives that we're able to provide students in those conversations of teaching them to be good citizens and again, tying it to being safe, respectful and responsible. I'm very proud of some of the work that we've done with our Jar Wars program. Our Jar Wars program, it's very similar. It's been done at many other schools as well. It's talking about positive praise both in the classroom, the hallway, the cafeteria and on the school buses. We noticed last year specifically that the school buses were a major area in which we were seeing violations of the Code of Student Conduct. Through the good work of our PBIS coach, our school counselor and our Through the good work of our PBIS coach, our school counselor, and our assistant principal, we were able to transfer our Jar Wars program from the cafeteria in the classroom onto the school buses. They worked with our bus drivers, understood and taught them a little bit about what some of the expectations for our students were around safe, respectful, and responsible in the classroom and in the cafeteria, and brought that onto the school bus, the results of which were the pretty significant reductions in violation of the code of student conduct.
I want to say it again that we are very clear that PBIS does not diminish the role and importance of the student code of conduct as Mr. Charles states. So what are our next steps as we move towards full implementation across the vision this summer with a focus on using PBIS again as a structure for our efforts to enhance and support SEL opportunities in our schools? Our next steps are to move the work forwards towards sustainment beyond implementation by engaging our communities as well as our families in the work. Additionally, we know that students benefit from consistency, so the goal is to work with our families and community, community to establish the PBIS approach across all environments. And you heard just now that it spans the scope of reaching into our school buses and our bus drivers. As with implementing any program, consistency does matter. When asked, staff at our schools who currently implement PBIS, what's most important? They say PBIS provides consistency of expectations among staff and students alike. So for example, the language of expectations that a third-grade teacher, Ms. Brown, has is the same language that fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Peterson, has. So there's not differences in what's being shared with students. When staff, students, and families know the school vision and school-wide expectations of the way in which students are expected to behave, it creates a common language which helps create effective, common practices all throughout the school. Doing so results in consistency, and it's this consistency that matters most in developing a safe and predictable environment in schools. In this last video clip, we will hear how Providence Elementary School Administrator Principal Taylor and Dr. Manigal have been using PBIS to develop common expectations for ways in which students can remain safe, responsible, and respectful, and how they're teaching these expectations at school and encouraging parents to use that same language.
PBIS is heartfelt work. It's more than just an acronym, it's about beliefs. And here at Providence, we have captured that belief by the things that we do. We can't just say that we want to be respectful, responsible, and safe. We have to model what is expected. And when we model what's expected, it translates into the voices that we hear from our children, from our community members, and more importantly, our parents, because they're able to translate it into their homes.
And two of the pieces that have been key feedback for Dr. Manigal and myself so far as our implementation of PBIS are that exact common language. We've had numerous conversations with parents where they say they have been able to take our safe, responsible, and respectful and put it to use at home from things that they have heard from us, things they've heard from the teacher, or things they've heard from their own children about how things are going in the building. A second would be the feedback from staff in that developing the common language for the hallways and the cafeteria. On the common areas, it has really been helpful for the students and the community here at Providence and our family to know that when we're in the hallway, what does it look like when we are safe, responsible, and respectful? What does it look like in the cafeteria when we are those same three things? And the staff will tell you there's a huge difference in how our students are in those two areas with PBIS than before we started the journey with PBIS.
Considering our work in our schools and it's filling out into our families and communities, our work with PBIS has many positive outcomes and continue to be recognized by state and at the state and national levels. Our schools are being recognized as they are seeing positive impacts on implementing PBIS with fidelity. Our dedicated coaching staff who are here today and supports both from outside the division and within have been instrumental in garnering national and international recognition. For example, the Association for Positive Behavior Support has invited two of our schools to speak at their international conference. Christopher Farms Elementary School has a video that focused on cafeteria expectations and was nominated for Film of the Year. Additionally, our PBIS coaches have been invited by Virginia Department of Education staff to speak at trainings and webinars throughout the state. We've discussed what PBS is, some of the myths surrounding PBIS, and how we're using it in our schools to foster positive school culture and reduce discipline. I would like to thank Dr. Green, Dr. DiMaggio, and the PBIS coaches Nora Golding, DeLa Brown, Rose Coats, Denise Forehand, and Laura McMahon, who have worked closely with all of our school implementation teams to meet our goal of having all of our schools, elementary and secondary schools, fully implementing PBIS by the 2019-20 school year. I'd also like to thank the school administrators who've shared their PBIS stories on camera to assist in providing context and their progress with the work. And at this time, our team is happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the implementation of PBIS.
So I, I think the key operatives here, what I've heard from the principals, they, you can't overemphasize this consistency of expectation and common language. But another critical point is that this changes don't happen overnight. For whatever the reason, a certain school or a certain classroom or a certain teacher will be successful more quickly. So my, my question is, for, for teachers who, who are more challenged than others, and it could be the teacher, it could be that particular class, what supports do we have for the teachers who maybe need more support? And do they feel they can ask for that support?
One of the things, and I'd like Dr. Green and Nora to come up and to assist as it specifically relates to PBIS, but Virginia Beach is quite fortunate in that we have a plethora of resources available to support teachers, whether they're novice or whether they're experienced. And if they have any challenges with regards to managing classrooms in terms of behavior, certainly our five PBIS coaches are certainly here to support them as it relates to the big picture of PBIS implementation in their classrooms. However, the principals, the assistant principals, the instructional coaches are always there to support. Our central office staff are always there to support any teacher who's having difficulty, difficulty with managing their classroom to collect data to determine, is there an issue with class changes? Is there an issue with activity changes? Is there an issue with routines, practices, and procedures? And then we're better able to help them diagnose that when we're there to collect data for that. So the short answer is yes, we do have support for that.
So again, I've had teachers state that when PBIS is implemented in their school, behavioral problems spike. They have stated that they do not feel supported by administration, that they are discouraged from writing referrals, from taking disciplinary action because they have to keep certain numbers. And I have personally witnessed some of this. How would you address that?
Well, I would address that, as you can see from the presentation, that is not the impetus of PBIS. So again, we have five coaches who are here that work very closely with the PBIS implementation teams. We meet once a month with a district-wide PBIS implementation team where we have an opportunity to look at data. And if the data suggests that there is a school-wide issue, we can certainly address that. However, if there are individual issues, I would ask that the building principal work with that teacher and work with our central office staff to offer some support in terms of implementation. I'm not sure what school you're speaking of specifically, but we can certainly address that if there's one school, if there are a couple of schools that you have concerns about. And it could be a matter of implementation, I'm not sure where they are on the implementation cohort. We have several schools that are in their second year of implementation, and they're at different levels of implementation. Ideally, it's best, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that they're eighty percent fidelity of implementation. And some schools are just not there. We have some schools that are well above eighty percent implementation. I would also, you know, question if it's a correlation or causation for PBIS. And if it's an individual teacher, we certainly can offer support with that.
Okay, so next year, we're going to implement it on our remaining schools. So next year, they're going to have every school.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's elementary and?
No, I see.
So every school?
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, of the, let's just say elementary. Of the elementary schools, how many schools do we not have in there?
How many schools do we not have?
Do we have most of the elementary?
We will be bringing on twenty-three schools next year. That'll complete our elementary and secondary.
Uh, elementary and secondary, so you don't have it broken down?
Eight, eight high schools and two middle schools, and the rest are elementary.
That's it, okay. And then when, when was it first implemented? What year? Can you refresh my memory?
So we began this journey back in two thousand and twelve, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, two thousand and twelve with, I believe it was a cohort of six schools, and then it expanded to thirteen or a total of nineteen.
In two thousand and twelve, we started out with kind of schools that self-selected them, you know, and, and kind of were approached by administration about like students interested. So it was a?
Could you go to Mike, um?
Yeah, that's okay. Where do I get that?
I'll wait.
In two thousand and twelve, we were starting PBIS, kind of having schools self-select where administration offered them this support. So we have a very group that started back then. And two thousand and fourteen, sixteen was when we brought on a group of the six elementary schools that you were speaking to, Dr. Rogers, where they had coaching support. The previous group, that two thousand and twelve group, and on between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen actually had state support, where they had state coaches that would come and visit them. The success that we've seen is actually having our coaching team working side by side with school leaders on the implementation. That's where we really feel like we get fidelity with them. And, you know, we, we feel like that's been our success.
Okay, so, so we have a good handful of schools that have, that have met that three-year, what you said, you need to be in there for three years, because we have it's two thousand and twelve through two thousand and nineteen. So, so we've been able to look at data. So in fact, are we seeing that the schools that have implemented it, is the teacher turnover rate less, is the academics higher, is the, are the school climate surveys, have they improved? Is the safety improved, the perception and, and/or the overall safety of students and teachers? So, so do we have a report on how that goes with the schools that have implemented it that are now in, and at least, I mean, some of them are in year eight. We have a lot that have passed the third year. So are all these coming true? Because that's what you said the test was, that you could see if it's working, I guess. So, so are we seeing that the teacher turnover is less, the academics are improved, school climate surveys are improved, safety has improved?
And that's a good, that impression I shared with you was national data that we have not disaggregated that data to that level to cross, to my knowledge, I've not seen any report that crosses all of those aspects that I, I shared with you. It says for our school division, and I don't think that that was planned, in the plan to do, to my knowledge, in the very near future.
How are we, I mean, my question is, how do we know that it's working? I mean, I thought that's, I thought that's what we would implement on this cohort, see that the data shows that it's working or not working. And I guess that's to Ms. Hughes' kind of question too. Yeah, what is the evidence that it's working? Or when is that going to come, the evidence that this is working?
We have on the evaluate, just want to remind, we have on the evaluation schedule, a readiness evaluation of PBIS this year that you all approved last summer, that will be up for, you'll receive in the fall.
Okay, so that, and that will include all evaluation, like the school, the climate surveys correlated to the PBI schools.
What comes out in the readiness evaluation is, what are the goals and objectives? How do we plan to, you recall, the readiness evaluation is the setup for how we plan to fully evaluate the particular program or initiative.
Well, I would like, I would personally like to see a correlation with the things that Dr. Rogers just told us as far as what, what we're looking at, whether it be nationally or state. But for Virginia Beach, I want to see if, in fact, in the schools that this is implemented, and, you know, not the first year, but are we seeing that academics are on the rise, that school climate surveys are better, that teachers have a less turnover because things are going so much better? I want to see that correlation.
Maybe especially for the, for the schools that have had it implemented already three-plus years. Because we're already past that point, right? I mean, there's not, not every school had it more than three years, but there are some.
There are, I don't know, about the level of support from the division level though, with those early adopters that self-selected in. So we'd have to tease that out with folks, but of course.
Yeah, just want to see some sort of correlation so that we can know what's going on.
So we'll have to deal with our research team, Anna, because there are any number of variables at play, right? So, and so if you, if you said, well, we'll lump all the third-year schools together, those are, that's going to be a very diverse and different group of schools. And so you'd have, there's any number of other variables we'd have to account for. But I'm sure if we go to our research team and talk about that, we can figure out a way to find you the data.
I mean, just somehow, how it's working, if it's working?
Absolutely. We did share some data the last time, we, we talked about this around discipline, and we shared some data that showed that there was some varying levels of discipline for schools that have been in the work longer. But relative to other, some of the other questions you're asking around teacher turnover and climate, some of those things, we haven't done those analyses. But we'll have to look at things like, you know, consistency of leadership, length of leadership, student demographics and all those things, and figure out how to account for those variables in the data as well. Because again, you start, start trying to suggest causality, that becomes more difficult when you're looking at, unless you're controlling for different variables, as you know.
So you mentioned, you had a slide that had myths versus facts. And every single teacher I meet and talk to, I ask them how they feel about PBS, PBIS, and how it's working. I have not had one positive response out of everybody I've spoken to. And in their opinion, those myths are reality. And I want to read, and this isn't just with teachers. Here's a, here's a message that I received May second from a parent. I wanted, and this is at a school that has implemented PBIS and has, so she says, "I wanted to let you know we have decided to pull our daughter beginning next school year from Virginia Beach Public Schools. The PBIS system in place has allowed consistently poor behavior to become the norm. No rules are enforced by the administration. I feel for her teacher. She works long and hard and has tried many systems to promote good choices and behaviors. I've heard from teacher after teacher who said, who are telling me they're going to leave our division because of this. And the teacher working surveys that we just received indicates this. The school's rules for student behavior are effective as a statement. The numbers on these are terrible. One school that has, has implemented PBIS, only eight percent of teachers say that the school's rules for student behavior are effective. Another one, twelve percent of teachers say that they're effective. There's one that has twenty-five, fifty-six, sixty-five, fifty, twenty-nine. I cannot believe that we're looking at full implementation of this program across our division when our teachers are telling us it's not working. And I, I hope that a hard look will be taken at, at that and that our teachers' voices will be heard in this.
Well, absolutely. I appreciate you sharing that. I've not had an opportunity to look at the same data that you're looking at. However, we certainly will. I'm thinking that you're thinking of the climate data that was distributed.
The working condition survey conducted by U D O.
Yeah, we've not had an opportunity to take a deep dive, to look at the number of persons who responded to that or do a correlation with the schools that were implementing, and to what degree they have.
So if I could chime in, because my team has reviewed this data. And so I, I'm someone who finds data fascinating because it's so dependent upon the respondent. So for example, there is a particular school in year two of PBIS that sixteen responses representing forty percent of the, of the teachers respond. And on one question, this school's administration supports teachers' efforts to maintain discipline in the classroom. Twenty-five percent of those sixteen, four people, responded, agreed a strongly to agree. And twelve of those responding people responded, disagreed, a strong disagree. Yet, three questions later, it says this school's administration sets high expectations for all students. And sixty-three percent of those sixteen people responded, they do set high expectations. So those two data points juxtaposed next, next to each other is fascinating to me. Then I go and look at their school discipline data. And at the time of this particular survey, this school had thirty-seven referrals last year in that two-month period, because there was a bit of an overlap. This year, they had forty-two referrals. So they had five additional referrals compared to what they had last year. In addition, the number of suspensions based upon those referrals also increased. So I find that fascinating, that one piece of data around the discipline. So I find that fascinating, that one piece of data around the discipline says that more kids were disciplined during the time when staff responded to this, more kids were suspended. But yet, the sixteen people who responded said, "Yeah, I'm not seeing it." And so I think that we have to be cautious when we look at the VDO survey response, because they are based upon the respondents. And anytime we're looking at respondents, that's less than fifty percent. And a number of these schools, at less than fifty percent of their staff respondents, we need to be cautious not to generalize. We do need to look into it. And so what we're doing with the docile team is every one of my three senior executive directors up here have had contact with their schools based upon this data to talk more about this. And I know in at least two schools, there's been some discussion with staff to get a greater understanding of why these responses were, because the reality is perception becomes reality. And so you need to address it. I think we should be cautious not to generalize across the entire division based upon limited survey results. With the discipline numbers at this one particular example, and I will tell you, as of the end of April, we have had two hundred and fourteen more students referred this year compared to last year, and one hundred and sixty-one more referrals from two years ago. So our referrals are up nine percent. So evidently, the teachers are not getting the message, they can't refer kids. Not only that, is our suspensions have gone up from eleven thirty-two last year to twelve sixty-one, and from two years ago, from eleven oh eight to twelve sixty-one. So that, again, our suspensions are up eight percent. We aren't forcing behaviors in school, but the challenges are, we're facing kids that are coming into our classrooms, particularly at the elementary school, who have trauma-induced situations that occur at home, and they're not equipped yet, they haven't matured yet. Our discipline at the elementary school level is up. At the middle school level, it's slightly up, and it's down at the high school level. And I think that can be attributed to the efforts that we put in place. So I, I agree that, I'm going to be very interested to see what the data shows based upon those eight constructs up there for our schools of three years. But I would be cautious for us not to throw the baby out with the bathwater too early.
And just if I could follow up to that, and, and I, I agree, I saw, I saw some inconsistencies as well. I, I've studied how to read research, and so I looked at that, I looked at the number of correspondence by percentage, because that's listed at the top of each of the working condition surveys. And I didn't just generalize one school, I looked at all of them, and I looked at which ones had PBIS and which ones didn't. There are a couple of schools in here who are successfully implementing PBIS according to their teachers, but a lot of them aren't. And, and I, I just am very concerned about full implementation when we don't have a grasp on if it's effective right now or not.
Ms. Hughes?
Uh, yes, and this is not generalization with a small number. I actually was in schools during last school year, and I was in seventy-seven percent of the schools. Teachers were very, very forthcoming. I've never heard a teacher speak positively about PBIS. And if referrals are up by eight percent or nine percent, but disciplinary problems are up by twenty percent, you're still not getting ahead of things. And a large part of the data you're getting is self-reporting. Somebody decides whether or not to write down the disciplinary problem, that is, to some degree, self-reporting. And just a small anecdotal thing, some of what you're going to report is maybe by observation going into the schools. I was in a second-grade class where a student was throwing his seat at other people. It took forty minutes to remove him, yet within thirty minutes, I got a phone call from the office asking me, "Are you getting ready to take the kids to PE?" And I said, "Yes." Can you let them know they need to be extra good in the hallways today? Because we have company from downtown. So, that's a problem, that did happen.
I didn't say it didn't happen, I said it's not fair.
Well, it is fair, that shouldn't happen. So what I'm saying is, you're not getting a complete picture, even, even when you're observing things yourself, because they know that you're coming.
Ms. Melanie, I would just like to, I just want to say, we have nearly sixty-eight thousand kids in this school, who we cannot ask to leave if, if they misbehave. So we, as a division, have to come up with a way, a good way, a fair way, to stay on top of behavior with sixty-eight thousand kids. And I think we're doing a, a great job. The, despite being up in, in referrals, my kid's one of them, right? And I, as a parent, can't discipline my kids the same way. Each of them is different, and this is what I see that this allows. I like the three-tier system, the, the sum, the all, the sum, the few. And this takes, this takes time. And I think that's really important, that you sit back and, and you, you let this work. We have a lot of kids. And then, I don't, I don't, I hear from a lot of teachers, but I don't hear this. And I'll tell you, I'm in schools, oh, sorry, I'm in schools every week. And so I do see this working, and I am in the cafeteria every Friday, and so that's probably equal to PE, or it used to be. And Greeran Elementary School is doing a great job. And I love the common language, they all speak it, they know it. And one, one other note, when Dr. Cashwell stood at that podium and talked about PBIS last year, she said her daughter speaks PBIS at home, and I thought that was, I think that's great, it carries home, and it's just going to take some time.
Ms. Manny?
Um, so, in some of my discipline hearings, I've heard students talk about check-in, check-in, check-out, some sort of mentorship program where they check in with a trusted adult at the school. And some of the feedback that I've received was that the students weren't complying with that, and it was because they had to go do it themselves. The adult wasn't following up with them, and, you know, it seems like that's counterproductive. You know, a thirteen-year-old isn't necessarily going to seek out their mentor to turn in their sheet, or to check in with them, and then there was no follow-up by the mentor themselves with the student. So the check-in, check-out, whatever it's called, did not seem to be effective in a couple of the discipline cases that I heard. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I, I taught for several years, and I still have quite a few colleagues who I taught with for many years, who don't look at me when I talk with them in the schools, when I go to visit their classes. They don't look at me as a school member. They know that they can open up to me just as if they would somebody that they're having lunch with, for example. And so the positive feedback that I've gotten from this is that they realize this is going to take time, and that, that it's not an overnight fix, that this, this commonality of language takes time to develop, not only in, at school, but also with the home and parents. So I've had a lot of positive feedback from several of my former colleagues that I taught with, and I haven't had one of them who has told me that they, that this is not working for them, that they realize that, that there are times that, that they realize that just, this is just going to take some time to develop with their students. So, I, yeah, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
So, just a couple of remarks. So, I mean, I think it's interesting to hear that you, you've not heard from any teachers who think that PBIS is a positive thing, and so that tells me that we have some communication challenges that we need to be thinking about relative to, do you understand what PBIS is? Because I think as an educator, it's, it's interesting in and of itself to suggest that, you know, a tiered layer of support systems for students with behaviors and establishing a set of community-wide, school-wide, classroom-wide expectations that are common to all students that can be taught and reinforced would be seen as a negative. So what it tells me is that what they're seeing as the negative is a lack of support when it comes to behavior, or what level of expectation is relative to, to their role in, in that tiered system of interventions, right? And so that's a continued coaching and communication issue that we, we need to go back and look at. It would, I'm just going to say this again, I've said this many times before, it would be most helpful if members of the board would communicate to me which schools you're hearing about, because that is helpful for us in terms of our ability to go in and talk. So it, it is generalizing writ large to say, I hear from teachers all the time, it's better if you'll just say, "This is a school that seems to have a problem," or if it's literally every single school in the district that you've heard from, I need to know that as well. And so that level of communication would be helpful. Within all of that, I mean, I think a tiered structure, system which provides supports, which does take into account the code of conduct can be valuable. I, I'll look forward to a deeper discussion about the data with you. I do want to acknowledge our coaches. I know that our coaches will not hear this as a dismissal of your work, that you're doing every day, because your work is good, and I know that it's good, I've seen the impact of it, and I'm appreciative of what you're doing every day in our schools to support our teachers and their behavior. And, and so thank you for your efforts.
Ms. Ryan?
Very quickly, and, and I'm certainly cognizant of when I visit a school, but I, I have to think that if I'm in a school for two hours, teachers don't know where Carolyn Rice is going to be at ten-twenty versus eleven fifteen. And I've actually commented to principals recently about the order in which kids are walking to gym or to lunch. The, the one thing I, I want to share, though, that, that really truly was unscripted, when I walked into a, a school, the principal was in the midst of a discipline issue with a student. So again, that was not planned, and I just stood there observing, and this was a young child who clearly was having a tantrum, and I don't know what the issues for the child were, but the principal ultimately gave the child the choice. Okay, we haven't, we have a situation here, and you can have either a half an hour or forty-five minutes, and wherever it was going to be. And the student chose which of the two options he preferred, and that, and that was the end of it. And I, we talked about it later when we had our one-on-one, and I guess it comes under one of those components, but giving the child a voice on a decision, in the decision-making, in the process, so he wasn't let off, but he had a role in choosing. It seemed so trivial, and yet I just saw such a contrast in, in the difference in his behavior once it got to that point. It was just very interesting timing, and that's why I wanted to bring it up. And, and we talked about how that, you know, in the greater context of PBIS, once we had our discussion.
Any other comments or questions? I, I hate to not hear from our coaches here, because I'm sitting here thinking you guys have a wealth of information. Is there anybody who's dying to tell us something that we might be able to take away from?
Or can we ask some questions, maybe?
Sure, sure.
Um, so from, what is the main obstacle of you implementing this, I guess, successfully in a school? What's your main obstacle? Does it have to do with the teaching staff, the demographics of the teaching staff, the, the demographics of the schools, so what your main obstacle is? And what do you think is the, the best thing out of it so far?
Well, I think speaking from everyone who's involved in this work, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm not used to microphones. Instead of thinking about the biggest obstacle, one of the biggest shows of success is going to be when the administrator is really supportive. So whether it's the principal themselves, the assistant principal, as long as we have administrative support, and they are there supporting their teachers, it makes a really big difference in making sure that the messaging isn't miscommunicated, which I think is some of what we're dealing with, with a lot of the comments that we've been listening to today as well. I also wanted to mention that when we were talking about teacher support, we like to, our coaching staff thinks of the triangle for adults as well. So what are, what is our division putting in place for all of our teachers to support them? What do we maybe need to come back for some of them, which is, might be what you were speaking to? And then what supports do we have in place for just those few teachers who are really struggling with behavior management?
Ms. Ray?
I, I just, I need to reiterate, I'm in schools a lot. I mean, I'm, a lot. And I, I mean, we're all over the school. You know, they don't know where we're going to be at what time. Yeah, they know we're coming, but this is not staged. The way the children are acting in the classroom, and the way they're, you know, walking down the hall, and the way they're behaving in the cafeteria, I mean, I've been all over the schools, is obviously learning behavior, and they're, they're practicing it all the time. Are there some kids misbehaving? Yeah, but usually, I mean, I can tell, and I've seen, you know, I see the different classrooms. Some classrooms, I, I've asked to go in some that might not have been on the agenda of that principal, because I knew that person, or somebody said, you know, "Come visit me" or whatever, and they didn't know I wanted to go to that. So there, you know, I saw planned ones and unplanned classrooms, and I saw lots of positive behavior, and the kids were practicing a lot of the PBIS language, communication, and I could see it. And I've been, you know, I used to be in schools all the time, because I taught, and I've definitely seen quite a difference with the implementation of it and the advancement of the program since when it started. I, I've definitely seen a progress in there. So, and I'm looking forward to, because I definitely have dealt with that kind of behavior all of my life, all of my professional life, you know, as a teacher, as a, an association president, because I get all that feedback from teachers, and I've seen quite a difference and, and a growth in it. Are we going to see it all at one time? No. It's got, like, like Snow, they said, there's going to be, it's going to take some time, because this is not something that we have control of in all aspects, in all places of their lives. They're coming from different environments into our schools, and we have a lot to work with. So I think that it's a large school system, there's a lot of kids, we've got a lot, a lot of people we need to work with, and a lot of situations we have to work with. And it's not going to go all smoothly. We just have to keep working. And I like what you said about the support that the teachers are getting from their administrators. That's a major thing. And that's all learned, too. So it's going to take time, it's not a fast thing. So, you know, probably even more than three to five years, I would say, they're trying to give a generalization, I know, but this is something we need to work on.
That, that, you know, some of the data that you're talking about, this manning around, that we can pull out of the climate survey, because we see that in the data where teachers feel and don't feel supported by their administrators when it comes to behavior. And that gives us good opportunities to sort of march forward and work with them to help them understand what the expectations are in terms of supporting their teachers. I don't know, I guess as a, as a concluding statement for our staff, I just hope that our community understands that we do not believe our, our schools writ large, that discipline is off the rails. We understand that there are discipline challenges in any building, and we're not dismissive of that, we're working very hard on that every single day. But I don't want our community to have the impression that our schools are sort of mayhem-infested ends of behavioral problems, because I don't believe that's the case. And I don't announce every visit I make, and I know my team doesn't announce every visit that they make, and I don't see it when I'm in our buildings.
Okay, so no further questions, but we thank you very much and for coming today.
Thank you.
So, we're going to, I don't think we have enough time for any close at this point, so we're going to recess and reconvene at six o'clock in the school board room, and we will plan on our closed sessions.
Do we have time for one close?
No, we do not.
Dan asked if he'd be involved in both closed sessions, so he says, if he's not, we have done without him being here.
Ms. Hughes?
We haven't yet planned.